Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the June 23rd, 2020 regular monthly board meeting. Welcome. And we're going to start right in with board committee reports.
All committees.
We actually met the policy committee.
Great.
We met a few days ago and we're plugging along. And thankfully, Judah was very good with all and savvy, right, Judah? With getting all the stuff together. So we have another meeting coming up on July 1st. And so we're trying to get some policies nailed down and we're really going in the right direction.
Excellent. That's great news. Thank you. Okay, that's it for board committee reports. I'm so happy that the policy committee is underway. So big shout out, thank you to Dr. Glass for helping us establish that. And for our inaugural members, Tara Conti, Steve Progianski, and Judah Holstein. Thanks so much. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you. And of course, this being the final week of the 2019-2020 school year, it is a week to celebrate. And we have a lot of people we would like to, I would like to honor tonight, starting with our solvitorian, Nicole Liao, who we're so very proud of and work so very hard to achieve this honor. And I believe is heading off to Cornell. We're very, very pleased. And then our valedictorian, Ciara Fay, who has just had such a stellar academic career here at Eastchester High School as well, and is heading off to Notre Dame. Very, very proud of these two fine young people who really set the tempo and the example for others to follow. And we're just elated for them. We have a whole list of parents who have supported the district for many years, but particularly in roles this year that we want to be sure to recognize. And of course, my computer is completely frozen, which is, you know, the way it goes. I have a list here of everyone and it's not moving. Let's see, there we go. Thank you. First of all, President of the Eastchester Sports Club, Mario Delaria, he's just been tremendous. And if you had a chance to look at the awards recognition, that celebration for our seniors that was last night, that was put together, just an example of the fine leadership he's provided. And so I want to make sure that I give him a shout out. His leader, we look forward to great leadership again going forward. Our Eastchester Schools Foundation President, George Nguyen, who has just really been so supportive of the school district in many, many ways, in terms of financial backing, certainly, but also wise counsel and great advice and great partner. Our PTA council, our President Renee Howell, who's been right there with us along with President-elect Mary Dubisky. They have worked so hard on so many things with us and partnered with us this year to try to bring advocacy to the legislature for us, which was so very critically needed to work on the messaging with that, to encourage us to have parent voices at the table on so many important issues. So we're very, very excited and thrilled that they stepped up and led this year. And we know that they're going to stay involved. And our Vice President, Susan DeLuca-Gaines, and Secretary Deb Reiva, who have been right there in this partnership with us every step of the way. Our SEPTA President, Angela Asher, our SEPTA Council Representative, Jennifer Inglis, who have also been amazing partners on so many committees and have showcased some of the great work that our special educators are doing around the district for our students. Then we have our Presidents, Co-Presidents, and Council Representatives at all the various schools. Thank you to Co-Presidents, Lorraine Yorio and Andy Bellick at Greenville for Council Reps service, Christina Rivera and Stacia Trentini. We appreciate so much your service at Greenville. And at Eastchester Middle School, President Crystal Johnson. Thank you so much, Crystal, for your service. And Ann Hutchinson, the Co-Presidents, Roseanne Cosgrove and Jennifer Amadeo, and our Council Representatives, Vicky Lundro and Angela Poehl. Thank you so much to our representatives and Presidents at Ann Hutchinson. At Eastchester High School, Co-President Leslie Davidson and President-elect Jennifer DeTrano and Council Representative Jackie Flynn, just did amazing work in planning so many events for our seniors in particular, who of course had an amazing, amazingly difficult year going through COVID and being separated from either classmates or senior year. I think this group did a great job making sure that we stayed connected to our high school seniors. And Waverly, President Janine Parati, and Council Representative Brian Tratola, we thank you for your service absolutely. And we're so appreciative. And I think, then of course, our senior representative, our graduating senior representative, Rebecca Boyd, who serves as an advisor member representative on the board. Thank you, Rebecca, for all that you've done to stay engaged, to bring us updates and reports, and to provide us important input and to bring the student voice to the board. It's just so important. And lastly, but certainly not least, I want to thank our Board President, Cheryl Smith, who has just given heart and soul to this Board of Education, has provided the heart of an educator and the leadership that she's provided. Has been a confidant to me and a strength, a source of support and strength all along the way, and has really done a great job incorporating all the voices of students. I know that was one of Cheryl's focus areas this year to bring more student voices to the table. And I think we've accomplished that and done a good job with it. And I know all Board members have appreciated that. But also, you've led the board, Cheryl, with a sense of community and, you know, getting all voices involved. I think that's been a real, one of your hallmarks this year that we really appreciate. And so thank you for taking that extra service as part of your responsibility this year and taking it so seriously. And again, bringing the heart of an educator to this is very, very important. And I think we have, I just want to look at the list, there are so many to recognize. If I have omitted anyone, please forgive me. It is possible that this can happen with a long list, and I hope that I have not. And I think we have, I think we have recognized everybody that I was hoping to. And just a couple other little things, not little things, but things I wanted to mention in terms of events going on this week. We've had our film festival, our evening of music last week with our vocal showcase, and our High School Players Club Cabaret, which three nights in a row was just the most amazing showcase of student talent that one could imagine. And doing it all virtually at such a high level has been terrific. And today, we experienced the Greenville, last night it was the Greenville Moving Up Ceremony, but today was the Greenville Car Parade. And tomorrow, it will be the Ann Hutchinson Car Parade and Moving Up Ceremony virtually, as well as Thursday, we have the Waverly Wave. And the Eastchester Middle School will be having a virtual Moving Up Ceremony and car wave parade as well. Those events have turned out to be a lot of fun thus far. So if you haven't experienced that, you have a lot to look forward to. And I think, I hope you'll be able to come out and celebrate. And then, of course, we'll conclude the year with two graduation ceremonies for students on Friday, one at 3:00 and one at 6:00 for 150 people per the Governor's Directive. And we're glad that we're able to have that at least as a companion to the car parade that was held about a week ago for the high school seniors who are graduating. So thank you, everyone. And hopefully, hopefully I've managed to capture everyone. There are so many people who make a school district flourish and too many to mention. But I hope we've been able to recognize all the ones who have formal roles as parent leaders or as student leaders that we see regularly. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Rob, for your kind words. It's been a pleasure to serve with you this year and to work with you and the rest of the board. We have a great board and looking forward to continuing to work with this board next year and with you. And I'm sure the board will have things to say during board comments, but just want to second a huge, huge, huge thank you to the PTAs who've really stepped up during this, the school closure in unprecedented ways. And it's very, very sad to me that we're not able to celebrate you in person. But the PTAs have done so much to try to keep the celebrations for the students who are moving up from those schools as exciting and meaningful as possible. And really could not have done it without the PTAs. Thank you so much. Okay. So where are my people? Vito, you're, I see, I know you have the agenda open, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you have your, you're not muted. So would you go ahead and move four, five, and six from me?
Okay, I move, we approve the minutes of our June 9th work session, our June 16th work session, move the personal agenda for this evening for the attached, and we approve the Committee on Special Ed Recommendations for the attached.
Tara, do you want a second? Any questions or discussion on those? Okay, great. Wow, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show, it was a unanimous vote in favor of those items. Steve, do you have the agenda open? Can you move seven and eight?
Sure.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for one second? That bond resolution, the bond refunding has to be done via roll call vote. So I don't know if you want to pull that out and do that first.
Okay.
Okay.
Move 7.2, please.
This is, I'm assuming I don't have to read this entire novel.
I would hope not.
Okay, so, "The Board of Education of the Eastchester Union Free School District in New York hereby resolves by the favorable vote of at least two-thirds of all members of said Board of Education as follows that bonds are to be refunded." Do I, can I just say as listed?
I think so.
All right, as listed in the agenda.
Yes, you can just say as stated below.
As stated below in the agenda.
Thank you. Rob, do you want to second that?
I second.
Any questions related to 7.2?
I'll just ask the question, Lisa, could you just explain it to us? Because I honestly did not read through the whole thing.
Okay. So our fiscal advisors came to me a couple of weeks ago, and they stated that we had a refunding opportunity for two series of our bonds that are outstanding, which means that there's an opportunity out there for us to refund a lower interest rate and therefore lower our debt service payments every year. So over the next 10 or 11 years, this will reduce our annual debt service by anywhere from $20,000 to $35,000 a year. And overall savings is estimated to be over $300,000 over the remaining life of the bonds. So I told them to please proceed with it. And so they need this resolution. And then we're scheduled to sell the bonds in July 15th and then close on April 4th. I'm sorry, August 4th.
Okay, are there any, are there any fixed costs involved in doing this upfront?
No. So all the, all the fees to our bond council, to the advisors, to the underwriters, that all comes out of the net proceeds. And so the savings that we're going to recognize is above and beyond any of the fees that we have to pay.
Okay, thank you.
I assume they went through all of our other bonds to look for any other refinancing opportunities?
Yeah, our other rates are really pretty low. There's got to be a big enough arbitrage difference to get approval from the Comptroller's Office, so.
But I think it's important for the public that even though the language of the resolution states refund, which has a connotation to the general public, that is actually, this is actually a refinance. So no one thinks they're getting refunded bonds, they're actually refinancing the bonds.
I'm actually reading it now and I have another question. And one of the bonds we're refunding is 4.5%, but its year of maturity is this year. So are we paying that, I mean, the principal is $800,000. Were we gonna, are we gonna refinance $800,000 for this year? Or are we spreading that out over the next 12 years?
It'll extend the life, we're going to issue new debt to pay off both these sets of bonds. So yes, even though we would have paid that off over the next few years, we're still going to be paying it off at a lower interest rate. Overall, it's generating savings.
And now, on that one, we would have paid it off this year.
No.
Security, 2020.
No, it's got.
No, it says 2020, 2021, and 2022.
Right.
No, that's three different bonds.
No, that's the 2010 bonds.
That's the year of that maturity of that bond that's being refinanced.
It's just the year.
Relative to 2020 that's being refinanced.
If the principal amount's maturing in 2020.
I believe.
I don't understand the way it's written is what I'm saying.
Right.
To me, it reads like 825 is maturing in 2020, 860 is maturing in 2021, and 865 is maturing in 2022.
I think that, that bond is maturing August 15th of this year, this August. That's why they need to close by August 10th.
So the original amount was 825. We're not refinancing 825 because all we have left is the last payment.
That's in a series of bonds, right? So that's just like the coupon that's due in August. These are serial bonds.
So why would we refinance something that's due three months from now?
Because we have to refinance the ones that are due in 2021 and 2022 as well.
Oh, you got to refinance the entire balance that's left?
Correct.
So you're refinancing then about $2.5 million.
Yes.
Series.
Okay.
Yes.
Now I understand it. The way it's written, I completely could not understand it. And I actually kept this stuff, so I don't know.
Our bond council wrote it, so.
I know, I'm not going to say, you know, that's their business, but it's not clear to, you know, a novice reader or an average reader. But I understand it now and I'm fine. I'm okay with it.
So you need a roll call on this one, right?
Yes.
So I'm going to go around, just don't forget to unmute so we can hear, we can hear your vote, yes or no. So, all in favor? Tara?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vito?
Yep.
Aaron?
Yes.
Dave? Dave appears frozen to me. I want to come back to Dave. Judah?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Dave?
Dave, do a thumbs up.
Dave has a bad connection. I'm going to vote yes. Dave, are you back on?
He must have cable vision.
I'm sorry, Dave, we can't hear you. If you want to text someone your vote, I don't know. Give a thumbs up?
Put him as an abstained, it doesn't matter. I mean, it still passes.
Yeah.
You got the two thirds.
Oh, he held up his sign. He just voted yes. Excellent.
Good thinking, good thinking.
All right. Do you want, so we're done with 7.2. Steve, do you want to continue with the rest of seven and eight?
Sure. "Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the Treasurer's Report for May of 2020. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the, that the Assistant Superintendent for Business is authorized to transfer any amount deemed appropriate necessary from unappropriated fund balance to the Reserve for Tax Searcement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves transfers of $10,000 or over of June 2020. And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves Barrett Inc. change order for the amount of $45,000."
Yes.
"Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2020-2021 Board of Education meeting dates as attached."
Saying my connection's unstable.
"Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2020-21 CSEA custodial staff attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 20 to 2021 CSEA custodial staff holiday schedule as attached." Did I read that one already? "Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approved the 2020 to 2021 Eastchester Administrators Association holiday schedule as attached. And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2020 to 2021 12-month confidential and managerial employee holiday schedule as attached."
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Aaron, do you, can you want a second?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions on any, any of those?
Lisa, I'm sorry, can you just tell us what the change order was for? Because it doesn't, it wasn't really clear to me.
So there was an allowance in the contract for $45,000. So we had some change orders come through for about $52,000. So now we have to just apply the allowance to the contract. So it's a reduction of the $45,000 allowance. So the net increase to the overall contract's about $7,000.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I have a question on the Treasurer's Report. And my question, let me open it so that I can make an intelligent question here. And Lisa, I like the report very, very much, showing us the budget adjustments, the revised budget, the revenues and all that stuff. And, but my, my question really resolves around the encumbered column. Why we have so many variables that are not yet encumbered that we know we're going to spend? Example, teachers' retirement system has a huge number that's unencumbered, and it shows available, and you and I and everyone else know that money's not available.
So typically, you know, the way you create an encumbrance is that you do a purchase order, right? So there are things in there like our debt payments, our payments to TRS, things like that, that we don't do a purchase order for. So we could go through and create encumbrances, but it's, it's just not a common practice that's, that's normally done. You know, there are like transfers to capital, transfers to special education, the special aid fund, you don't do.
Well, I can understand it on those, but you know, when I look at the end of the report, it says $9 million available, and I know you don't have $9 million available, it makes the report appear useless to me.
Okay.
You know? So I think especially transportation, you know, you should encumber the half payment we're going to make to the transportation companies and show available is what we're going to save. You know? And I'm not saying do it for every line item, but, you know, retirement system, transportation, you know, some of those big ones.
Well, again, like the retirement system is the, they offset our state against it. So it's not like a check going out the door, so.
I understand that. And this might, this report might be used for something else. But for us as the, you know, fiscal conservators of the budget, I really like the report if that last column meant something to me.
Okay.
You know? And right now, the format it's in, it doesn't mean anything. But it's, it's great. It's, I'd like to see this, you know, maybe every three months during the year. You don't see it four times a year. Anybody else have a similar comment or?
Anyone else?
I have one comment I just noticed. As I was reading, I thought I read something twice. And I noticed that 8.2 and 8.3 have the same recommended action in there. But one is, it says for, the other for custodial. But the actual action in, when you click on it, they both say custodial. So just, so.
I'll page you right now.
In light of that question, I have another question. And this is a Jeanette question, so unmute. If we've already approved their contracts, why do we have to approve the holiday schedule? Because they're already in the contracts.
Because we have to designate days for them. I don't know, it's a really good question. I mean, you have a point, but we've been, historically, we've approved it every year since I've been here.
No, I understand that. And my point is, you shouldn't have to write up the resolution, we shouldn't have to vote on it. You guys determine the dates. Because the holidays already exist, you know? So, and the school calendar's already approved. So the school calendar already has those dates in them anyway. So, you know, why go through all that extra work? It's just, just a thought. You know? I appreciate you doing it, but.
I'm not sure, I, I mean. But the fact is that, like Christmas recess, that's not a holiday that's specific, you know, we have.
On the calendar.
Friday to the.
You already approved the calendar, the school calendar for next year.
But there, there are some holidays in their contracts that may fall on a Saturday or Sunday, and then we have to kind of agree what holiday are we giving them in exchange for that.
I don't think that's a board decision. I think that's an administration decision. Honestly, you know, because we already know that Martin Luther King Day is a Monday, but let's say Veterans Day was a Saturday.
The Fourth of July, Kito. So some people are giving Monday the sixth, and some people are giving off Friday, July 3rd, like in.
Do you really care, Sally?
What?
Do you really care? Let the administration determine that. I don't have to vote on that.
But if we've always voted on it, then.
I think it needs to be.
The way I look at it is, if it's, I understand the theory of you shouldn't always do something because you've always done it. But if it's always been approved by the board, it's not really hindering anything.
But Jeanette has to write. You know, it's, it's just like, it's extra work.
Well, can I also just add in, the holidays just changed thanks to the governor. We have to figure that out, and that's going to be a board decision at some point, how we deal with that in terms, maybe negotiations, whatever. But we just, the holiday schedule did just change this, you know, last week.
Which holiday schedule? I'm not aware of that.
Juneteenth? The governor's making it a state holiday.
That doesn't, becomes a contractual holiday, Cal.
But you know what? Other, other entities are. So like, you know, I had to do with the Westchester County Health Department on Friday. They had to come in on their day off and take another day off because the county executive recognized it. So other entities are, Cow Ridge had a half day. It's not just the governor deciding it for the seat. Other entities will probably have to decide.
I think, I think, you know, perfectly legitimate question, I'm fine to approve it this time or, you know, to accept it.
Don't approve it.
Discuss extra work, right? We're creating extra work and having to transcribe this discussion. And I, I'm not sure it's going to change a vote. You know, I'm not saying it's not an important discussion, but it's certainly one we can have at our, at a future meeting when we're in person going forward about holidays, if you don't, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Great. Thank you. So all in favor of, oh, we had a second, right? All in favor? Any opposed? We have a unanimous approval of all those items. So future meeting dates, we have our Tuesday, July 14th reorganization meeting in person is the plan for that. Tuesday, July 21st, our board retreat, also in person. And then our next two working sessions, Tuesday, September 1st and Tuesday, September 15th. I believe those are both working sessions. Those are the next meetings on the schedule. Hopefully, we'll be able to have them all. Any comments from the board?
I got one. I just want to thank everybody again officially who came out to vote. And I want to thank everybody for passing the budget because in a, in a full, in a full absentee mode, we expected so many more votes, and we got so many more votes. But it was nice that we got a lot of positive votes. I want to thank all the people who worked hard on making that happen and counting it. And I also want to thank, as having run this year, I want to thank the public for 80% of the people voted for their trustees, which tells me that, you know, four out of five people are happy with the representation they're getting. So I think that's a good thing and it's a positive thing we could take out at the election. with the representation you're getting. So I think that's a good thing and it's a positive thing we could take out in the election.
Thank you, Vito. Any other comments from the Board?
I just wanted to thank the educators and of course, the families that we've gotten, we've gone through this together and such challenging times, but we made it. And may there only be better times to come.
You're here. Any other Board comments? No. Well, this is my last public Board meeting as President. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. Thank you for your support this year. It's been a real pleasure and an honor to serve the district in this capacity. And I want to thank everyone on the Board for supporting and on the Administration for supporting and, and helping me through the year. It's been great. Thank you so much. I believe I need a motion to adjourn to Exec to discuss a personnel matter. Anyone want to move that? Sally, a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Steve. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.